All right, I call to order this regular scheduled meeting of the 34th City Council for October 24, 2023, scheduled for 7:00 PM. Everyone in the audience, if you can silence your phones or communications devices as to not disturb the meeting. Mr. Clerk, can we please have the roll?
Councilmember Inos.
Here.
Councilmember Hamud.
Here.
Councilmember Abraham.
Here.
Councilmember Paris.
Here.
Councilmember Elsawafi.
Here.
Councilmember Herrick.
Here.
Council President Serini.
Here.
We have a forum?
Okay, at this time, I would like to turn the meeting over to Councilman Hamud.
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce Pastor Judge Leveque of Dearborn Baptist Church, who will give the invocation at tonight's meeting. Everyone who's able, please stand for the invocation and remain standing for the Pledge of Aegis.
Father in heaven, Lord, we come to you tonight, Lord, with many heavy hearts for the many lives that have been lost these past weeks, Lord, in Gaza and in Israel. We pray for the families who have lost loved ones, Lord. I know many in our own community have been affected by this, and I pray that you would protect all those that are still in harm's way. Lord, we pray for a swift end to the violence, that steps might be taken, Lord, to end the fighting and stop the bloodshed. I pray that you would protect the innocent, and those that are lost and missing would be found, you'd heal those wounded, those held captive would be released, and that you would defend the defenseless. Lord, I pray for our community, that we would also have peace, and that you would help us all, Lord, to speak with courage and compassion, and that we would all act and speak with love for our neighbors and treat others as we would be treated. I pray for our leaders tonight, our mayor, our city council, Lord, grant them wisdom to lead and guide through these troubled times, and also, Lord, to continue to take care of all of those important things that affect our daily lives here in Dearborn. I pray for our first responders, Lord, that you would give them peace as they keep the peace. And, Lord, above all, we pray that your will would be done, that your kingdom would come, Lord, and that all would be on earth as it is in heaven. We ask these things in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor. At this time, we will entertain a motion.
I'll motion to suspend the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules by Councilman Hamud, supported by Councilman Elsawafi. All right, at this time, as the pastors indicated regarding the international conflicts that have been happening, we wanted to make a statement as the 34th Dearborn City Council is unified in this statement that follows, that we call for immediate humanitarian aid to the civilians in Gaza. Basic life necessities such as food, water, medical supplies must be able to flow through into Gaza to those that are in need. The civilians must be able to get out of harm's way, and in order to do so, there must be a ceasefire to allow their safe passage. Our fundamental human beliefs are that every civilian's life is equally valuable. We call on our national leadership to prevent this conflict from spreading throughout the region and to build a real lasting and just solution to this crisis. To our Dearborn residents that are concerned with this rise in hate crimes, be confident that the city of Dearborn, with our police department, is on full alert, and rest assured that you are safe in Dearborn. We stand with our high school students, who chose to exercise their fundamental American right to peacefully protest. We denounce the media reports to the contrary. And at this time, I'd like to have a moment of silence for all the lives that have been lost in this conflict. The administration, would you like to have something at this time as well?
Thank you.
So while we still have the rules suspended, I would like to have the Chief of Staff.
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate the opportunity to speak. The recent increase in misinformation about our city spread for political gain to sow more seeds of Islamophobia and anti-Arab sentiments that we know all too well as this community is very dangerous. It is imperative that we uphold the integrity and safety of our city by ensuring that accurate and factual information prevails over divisive rhetoric and false narrative. Make no mistake, the intention of mischaracterization of Dearborn threatens to endanger the livelihood and well-being of our residents. For decades, people have come to Dearborn because it is a welcoming and safe haven, one that exemplifies the enduring belief in America as a multi-ethnic democracy that welcomes people from all walks of life. It has always been Dearborn's tradition to stand up for the rights and the security of our residents. We will not be denigrated or threatened for standing up for humanity and for protecting the rights of free speech and assembly. To our Dearborn residents, rest assured, your safety is always our top priority. Under the leadership of this administration, the police chief, Issa Shaheen, the Dearborn Police Department is unwavering in its dedication to your security. Have full confidence in our commitment to use all available resources to guarantee your safety and well-being. It is not the first time, nor is it the last, that Dearborn will be singled out and subjected to misinformation campaigns that seek to undermine the strength and the peace of our community. However, as Dearbornites, our first language is resilience. It holds us together in times when a few loud voices try to silence the truth. We, as your city government, know and live Dearborn's story every day. We know the truth, and we will not be silent in the face of lies and injustice. To our Dearborn residents with loved ones who are trapped while living under siege of an apartheid government, you are constantly in our thoughts. Know that you are not alone. We feel your pain, your heartache, and extend our support and prayers as you endure the unimaginable trauma of bearing witness of oppression, violence, and murder taking place in Gaza. I appreciate Council President for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Chief. At this time, we will return Mr. Clerk to the regular scheduled meeting.
Item number four, resolution by Council President Pro Tem Herrick, supported unanimously, acknowledging Tom Wilson for being named the Michigan Commanders Group 2023 Veteran of the Year and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk, and I'd like to turn it over to Councilwoman Herrick to say a few words and thank her for bringing this forward. Councilwoman?
Thank you, Council President. The Dearborn City Council is proud of all of our veterans and our Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council, who actively works with the city every year to put on a wonderful heartwarming and remembering events, remembering the courage of all of our veterans and keeping those who are serving currently in our thoughts and prayers. At this time, we are proud of one of our longtime veterans who's been involved with the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council on planning our parades and our Veterans Day ceremonies and many other activities here in Dearborn. Thomas W. Wilson, who is here with us tonight, and I'd like to read the citation that the council would like to present to him in just a moment, and then we'll be breaking to take a photo with Tom Wilson. Tom was presented the Dearborn, I'm sorry, the State of Michigan Veteran of the Year Award by the Michigan Commanders Group, and so I'm going to read the citation that we are presenting to him tonight in recognition of the special honor that he's received. "On behalf of the City Council President Michael T. Serini, the 34th Dearborn City Council, and the residents of Dearborn, Thomas W. Wilson, congratulations on your recognition as the 2023 Veteran of the Year. Awarded by the Michigan Commanders Group, the positive impact you've had on the veteran communities throughout the state of Michigan is inspiring and exemplifies the highest ideals of service and community. This distinction stands as a testament to your exceptional character, and we are proud to see a veteran of our own community receive this well-deserved recognition."
Thank you.
So congratulations, Tom, and thank you for your continued service.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Before we bring Tom up for the photo, we have Councilman Elsawafi would like to speak on this as well.
Thank you, Council President. Tom, I've known you long before I was even on city council, and to me, you've always been a brother in arms, a friend, and truly a mentor. And while you're the Veteran of the Year, maybe this year, or I think you're truly the Veteran of the Year every year. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you. All right. Mr. Wilson, would you like to come forward? Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry, Councilman. I apologize. Yeah, Councilman Paris.
I just wanted to say thank you to, you know, Councilman Serini and myself and our city clerk, George Durante, a week ago, Wednesday, were at the Dearborn Allied War Veterans Council installation ceremony, and then also, you know, had a little bit of a dinner and some conversation afterwards. I got to tell you, I was amazed by what Phil was saying about you and your other fellows that were in the audience. You've had a long and distinguished career, you know, with the Dearborn Allied War Veterans and so many other things, and I just personally wanted to say thank you. I know Councilman Serini was there on behalf of the mayor, and so I just wanted to personally say thank you. It was good to be there and see what actually transpired, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Paris. It was really nice to Phil and the administration. To have Roman Village there was a really good treat, too. You guys do a nice job when you have a party. I appreciate that. All right, we're going to have you come up in the front here and prevent you with the citation.
Ron Satter.
George.
All right. Toys for Tots.
I'm off to here, right?
I know. It's going to warn them.
It's going to warn them.
Wait a second.
No flag.
I don't know if that would be.
You wind it on it.
Camera, get the camera.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Did you hear?
It's on his jacket.
Yeah, he's part of the unit.
It's a good joke.
Maybe I'll have you again.
Thank you.
Bye, people.
We're all of them.
Yeah, I know, but maybe he sees clothes.
It's going to warn them.
Uh-oh.
Hold on a second.
No flag.
I don't know if that would be.
I don't know if that would be.
You wind it on it.
Camera, get the camera.
Yeah.
It's interesting.
Did you hear?
It's on his jacket.
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 I think the battery has an issue because the screen's not going on. It's all my stuff. I think the battery's dead.
I can't figure the math out on that.
It's probably a software issue, actually.
It's signed by legal. Jeremy signed off on it.
Are you sure about this? Let me check.
I don't see nobody yet. We'll see. All right, Mr. Clerk, can we have the next item of business?
Item number five is public comment.
Okay, at this time, we ask the public, we have a public comment 30 minutes prior to our meeting agenda, and with a three-minute limitation to each person, which the clerk will give you a 30-second reminder when you're at the end. We do ask that the public fill out cards, and if you don't have a chance to fill one out, you can stand up and we will recognize you to speak. So at this time, we have Ms. Hamilton-Stokes.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paula Hamilton-Stokes, and I am a City of Dearborn retiree and Vice President of the Dearborn Municipal Retirees Association. This will only take a moment. I just really, really want you to know how I feel. And it has to do with the healthcare coverage letter that we all received a couple of days ago. It offered great information, which is websites, phone numbers, and so forth, and ways for the retiree to get help with any questions that they may have. It also explains the debit cards, which we are very, very grateful for. On the backside of the letter, there is additional information explaining the FPL guidelines. It appears the majority, at least the majority of retirees that I know, I had a meeting today. There were 50 in attendance, but I have about 580 that are in my particular group, and it appears from talking to them and from checking the last week or so, there isn't one single person that will benefit in any way, shape, or form from 200% of the federal poverty level. I don't know how the 200% was arrived at, as opposed to 150% or 10% or 800%. I don't know where 200% came from. I'm grateful, and I really believe they are as well, because no one qualifies. We weren't consulted in any way prior to this happening, and I think that my retirees and myself have done a spectacular job adjusting to the hand that they were dealt. My only comment that I want on record with you, I want you to know how I feel, is there anyone that could be persuaded to look at this percentage again? I realize there's another letter going out in a month. I would be surprised if two or three people applied. I don't even know if we have two or three people. We have over 1,000 retirees.
You have 30 seconds.
So, I appreciate your time. I really do, and I thank you. So glad, Councilman Elsawafi, again, that you're home and that you're safe. Okay? Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Stokes. All right, next we have Mr. Eric Cullen.
Evening, Council. Again, it is good to see you back, Councilman Elsawafi.
Thank you. Happy to be here.
Eric Cullen, President of Police and Fire Retirees Group. Kind of following up what Paula said, I guess, I shouldn't say this, but I assume council is aware of the letter that went out to the retirees over 65. Went out on October 16. And as Paula was talking about the 200% of the FPL, what my question is, will council be able to decide, or will you have input into what figures are going to be used to determine the 200% FPL? Based on your federal income tax return, there's two important lines. Line nine is your total income. Line 15 is your taxable income. There's quite a difference. Will council have any say into what numbers are used for this program?
Yeah, we will address your questions. Well, you can continue so that you don't lose your time.
Okay. Again, that's fine. That's basically my question, because as I say, it does make a big difference which number is used. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you. To answer your questions, we did, most of us were aware of the letter, and Councilman Paris, being a retiree, had brought that forward to us. This is a budgetary aspect, and it was budgeted, so in my opinion, unless legal has a difference, it is definitely up to the purview of the council to set that parameter and that budgetary amount. But I'm sure we will not visit that until our budget hearings for the next fiscal year, which will be sometime in March or April timeframe, for the following fiscal year, which will, you know, of course, start in July of '24.
Right. Thank you, Councilman. I understand it, but I guess what I'm concerned with, if that's the possibility, is the future, the next letter that's going to come out to establish, I know you're talking about the budgetary situation for the year, but I guess in the letter that's going to come out in December, will council have any input? And I'm not sure what the letter's going to say in December. I'm assuming it'll be like, here's the guidelines.
I know. I know.
Okay.
I know what you're saying. You're asking, and the program just for the residents don't start till January.
Right.
Right, I know. So it's, this is what we call an inference on an inference on an inference, right? Which I never engage on. So I can tell you that the council is aware, but I also don't want to speak for every member, but the gist of this was there was no program that covered somebody that could not financially afford it. So first of all, my intention was that it was going to be very few people that were going to be eligible for this. This is someone, these are someone that cannot make it at all. This is not to put you at the position you were prior to the city making cuts. That's not what this was intended for, and that's my understanding during the budget process. So I would not, I would reserve the situation for us to speak on it once we have data for the next year to see if anybody qualified and was the intention, but I'm sure there will be a discussion by the council on what their intention was. But the budget that passed, it was intended to be for someone, because remember, you were on the committee, and this was not brought up by the committee. This was brought up by the mayor, brought to the city. Correct? Or are you stalling? Do you have, do you disagree?
No, no. There was discussion during the committee time about this FPL.
Okay, let me rephrase. Did you present this product to the?
I don't, I did not, no.
Yeah, that's correct. It was brought up by the mayor after, asking us to fund it, and he asked to fund it for a very large amount, and the council disagreed with him, funded it at a lower amount, because we did feel that the purpose of this was for someone that could not make their financial obligations at all. It was not intended to keep people at the same position they were prior to the cuts. That's just my take on it, but I believe that the council has to look at what happened and look at the data to see what, who was eligible, and then we can, we will readjust it based on what the council feels at that time during the budget hearings.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Abraham?
Just, I think all of us are very familiar with what we're talking about. I just want to kind of take a step back for those people that might be listening that don't understand what happened. When the retiree healthcare program was dramatically changed to reduce benefits, they didn't, no one, no one was left out. Everybody felt pain, and the council and the mayor recognized that. What we didn't anticipate clearly was there, when you make sweeping changes, there are always outliers to every program. We have over 900 retirees on medical care provided by the City of Dearborn Retirement Funds. In reaction to that, the mayor and the council brought together what I would call a hardship program. The vision was to reduce the burden on individuals that were significantly impacted financially beyond what was anticipated when the program was changed. We knew that benefits would be reduced. We never intended it to harm people above and beyond what they could afford to carry, if you will. And so this program was put together. I'm going to tell you, it's probably not perfect, but we work in an environment where if things are broke, we try and fix them. But I think we can all agree on what the mission was, and there are, you know, the outlier people, not the mainstream retirees. There are certain small group of individuals. This program was set in place to help, to benefit, and if we didn't get it right, we'll get it right, we'll get it better the second time.
Thank you, Councilman Abraham. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. I appreciate bringing this forward, and the council president was correct. You know, I am a retiree, and just for the record, police department retiree, city retiree, that I do receive the healthcare benefits, which are respective to speakers we're talking about. What I will say is, I had a little bit of confusion about this matter myself right from the very beginning, in whether we would have either a study session or some more discussion about this. And then when I did receive this letter, as you speak of, back on December, dated December 18th, or, I'm sorry, October 13th, it does make reference that there will be another letter coming out December 18th. You know, I look forward to seeing that and maybe shedding some more light on what we might be able to expect in the future. I will say that I did bring this up at the committee the whole last Thursday, and I did get an explanation from our finance director, from the administration, and also our council president, that we do need some more information to go forward. As far as a study session or looking into the matter, you know, sometime in 2024, and I would imagine before the or during the budget process, that this will be evaluated and looked into again. At least, I think we have now, everybody is on that same thought process going forward, that we will look at this as a budget process this coming year. But more importantly, and I think it makes very much sense, that we have some sort of an experience, how many people may in fact qualify, if any at all. It may not be anybody. It may be a group of people that really are impacted, and a hardship would apply to those folks, because we all know, and myself in particular, I know there are retirees out there in their 80s, they didn't expect a change. They didn't save up for it. They didn't plan for it. They retired thinking that they would get the same benefits, and they did not. That in of itself is somewhat, to me anyways, and I'm only speaking for myself, is a hardship for a lot of people. It's a lot to take. It was a big change. So, but what I will say is, I know during this next budget session coming up, when this does come up, I would surely hope that you attend or any other retirees that may want to listen to what's going on, and you're more than welcome to come into these council meetings and voice your opinion, too. So I thank you for coming forward, and I thank our council members, too, for the understanding that this does need to be looked at in the future, and I'm sure it's going to be looked at, especially during the budget process. So thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you, Councilman Paris. All right, is there anyone else from the public that would like to address the council during the public comment section? Would you like to? Yeah, you can, you can at this point. Would you like to come forward?
There's nothing about the retiree thing.
No, that's okay. No, it's a public, it's a public comment time, so if anybody would like to speak to the council, and before our 30 minutes are up, there's comment cards right on the railing where you can fill them up and come up and speak.
Hi, Phil Smith. I'm obviously the Veteran of the Year for Dearborn.
Yes, sir.
And other things, I got plenty of. Anyway, tomorrow night, we're having a welcome home for the unit that Councilman Al Safari, Lieutenant, I'm sorry, Al Safari was in and went to Iraq and had some issues over there. The, I think the City of Dearborn and the Dearborn Allies is going to have the event Studio A, the Welcome Home.
Yes, absolutely.
Something, and there's probably going to be some extra people show up. I can't tell you who.
Phil, thank you for bringing that forward. Councilman Elsawafi?
Thank you so much, Council President. I just want to thank Phil Smith for all your hard work and helping put this together along with the City of Dearborn. I'm definitely excited for it. It's going to be happening tomorrow at the Civic Center at 1800 or 6:00 PM for everybody else.
We can send you to another bar, too, so.
And I just want to recognize that the City of Dearborn is the only city in the state of Michigan that's holding a welcome home ceremony for the heroes from the 125 Infantry Battalion that were deployed overseas.
The other thing, good fellows are starting up, and I know it's stuffing on your toes, but so, and joining with that, and so is Toys for Tots.
Toys for Tots, great.
So, the city to join in again, as usual. I've already added three more zip codes to my area. No more cities, so.
I try and keep up with your energy, Phil, but I can never. Yeah, keep up the good work. I really appreciate you.
All right.
Thank you, Phil. We do appreciate all you do. Thank you, Phil. We do appreciate all you do and I, I have a lot of great experience with the Toys for Tots and the work you do and this is what makes the fabric of the city Dearborn. It's tremendous what people do and give to those that are not fortunate at certain times. So we do appreciate it. Thank you, Phil. Anyone else here that would like to address the council during this public session? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mr. Clerk, we will close the public comment section and proceed with our agenda.
Item six, resolution in need of offer and support, approving all the items on the consent agenda and requesting immediate effect.
All right, before we move onto the consent agenda, are there any items in which any member would like to remove from the consent agenda and discuss individually?
Remove 11.
Number 11? Councilman Hamud would like to remove number 11. Mr. Clerk, do you have that?
Yes.
Okay. And we had an offer by Councilman Paris and supported by Councilman El-Sawafi. Mr. Clerk, we need a roll call vote.
Councilmember Inos?
Yes.
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
Yes.
Councilmember El-Sawafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Seven years, the resolution passes.
All right, Mr. Clerk, do we have the next item?
So we will move to item 11.
Yes.
Just moved off the consent agenda, resolution by councilmembers Abraham and Inos, authorizing a cooperative contract with one five-year renewable option through the state of Michigan, MyDeal program with T-Mobile in the amount of $92,000 annually and a five-year contract total of $460,000 for cellular services and equipment, valid December 1st, 2023 through November 30th, 2028, and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The council is asked to authorize a five-year cooperative contract with Verizon that expired December 2023. Currently, the city has 413 devices, including 294 cell phones, 119 tablets and Service Pros. This contract will provide cellular service, voice and data, and a new equipment for the city employees that utilize cell phones and other devices in performance of their duties. The existing service through Verizon is no longer provided, is providing us with the proper coverage signal and the customer service use that we are experiencing. We have experienced signal loss and lack of network connectivity and coverage across the city buildings. So purchasing on behalf of the IT department recommends the purchase via cooperative contract and cellular services equipment from T-Mobile. This new contract will be a five-year contract on a month-to-month basis, valid December 1st of 2023 through November 30th of 2028 with a one-year renewal option. The fiscal impact on the contract will be $92,000 annually with a total cost of $460,000 over a five-year time. Is respectfully requested that the council authorize the use of the cooperative contract and asked immediate effect will be placed on this order to allow for adequate time to provide the products. Any questions or comments on this item? Councilman Hamud?
Yes, we had a meeting, or we had some comments at the, between the whole and then anecdotally, I heard that it's not a separate network. So I guess my question was, I haven't heard it directly from the.
Yeah, we'll have the director come up. And just, please just kindly state your name and your, your position and then the councilman, you can ask him the question again.
Good evening, Mansoor Sharha, the Innovation and Technology Director.
Yeah, so I do have your email here regarding the T-Mobile coverage at Gully and Cherry Hill, which I've been a T-Mobile customer now over 10 years and I've always had an issue in that area. And then we have some measurements in regards to the 4G LTE, so, well, this we haven't received yet, so.
Thank you.
I think the concerns of the council in approving this contract and shifting from Verizon were, had to do with coverage reliability. I mean, I'm also a Verizon customer, funny enough, and I've had pretty decent experience overall, maybe not necessarily sometimes in buildings, but generally throughout the city. But I know for a fact that there are dead zones for T-Mobile in the city, which I still enjoy as a T-Mobile customer. I just live, learn to live with it, but it's harder when, you know, you have mission critical things like ambulances or, or police vehicles that are equipped with these types of data reception. So again, I, I think the question is, I mean, is there, like, are we sure about this? Is there any redundancy for these people? And then how, how bad is the coverage right now of Verizon that we feel the need to switch? And have we talked to Verizon about, about enhancing their coverage inside of our buildings? If that's the issue?
Correct. So I'll address Verizon first.
Okay.
We had multiple meetings with Verizon to improve the signal in our buildings and they had multiple responses, but the responses were not enough. We gave them multiple chances to build an infrastructure just for us, especially here at the Dearborn Administrative Center. We have bad signal for Verizon. Also, some of our remote sites. The technical rep from Verizon told us that we have to wait until the end of the contract, then they can look into new infrastructure cost to build for the City of Dearborn to cover those dead zones. And that's where we had to look for an alternative and T-Mobile was a better alternative based on the data that you see in front of you. The reason you did not receive this because Council Bob Abraham is the only person that asked for the data and we sent it to him, he reviewed it. But now you have a copy of it.
Director, just so we're careful and Jackie, and I know this is your first term, but the Chief of Staff is well aware, any request in a public meeting made by a council shall be sent to all council. So just for the future.
Absolutely.
Director, any, any direction on a public meeting, on an official public meeting should be sent to all council.
Noted.
But we do appreciate that.
Of course, no problem. But you can see on this sheet here, we had a network engineer and a data engineer from T-Mobile going to every single of our buildings. And they verified the signal and they provided this data. However, we made it clear with them as well that if we notice any areas that are going to be impacted by any signal, they are responsible to provide the proper infrastructure to make sure that there is coverage. With the merger with Sprint as well, they also have what's called T-Mobile Public Sector. They have trucks that are available with immediate network coverage to be driven immediately to that area to cover that event if we have any network needs. And that commitment is with T-Mobile.
Is the, is the, is the aspect where they will cover our dead zones, is that written in the actual contract?
Correct. If there are any issue with coverage, it is their responsibility to upgrade the infrastructure to make sure that the signal is what is expected from that place.
All right. If we have a service guarantee, then that's better than what I thought. All right, I'm good.
And again, not only with the service guarantees, the cost will almost going to be down by 40%.
Yeah, we did recognize that in the council. I think Councilman Abraham, our, that a CBA went through the number. It was definitely significantly lower. But Councilman Abraham, do you have a question?
I have, just to put this into layman's terms, because I'm a T-Mobile customer. I agree with Councilman Hamud's comments. So you handed out the test results and, for example, at the DAC, it says 5G excellent, okay?
Correct.
I'm not an IT guy. I don't want to be. But I'm sitting here and I'm telling you.
That's why I'm here.
I have one bar or two bars and I would not consider that excellent.
So the, we, we asked that question. The amount of bars in your cell phone does not represent the coverage.
So what does represent the coverage? Because I guess I don't understand.
So the availability of network is what represents the coverage.
So if they have.
If you have two bars, you have coverage.
If I have one bar, do I have coverage?
You do, yes.
And if I have one bar and I can't hear the person on the other side, is that acceptable?
No.
But you just told me it's excellent by your definition.
By T-Mobile definition, it's excellent because it's more than two bars when they tested here.
But let's be practical. I don't want to get into semantics.
Sure.
If, if I get a piece of paper that says I have excellent coverage, but by definition, I'm in a position where I can't make a phone call, to me that doesn't work.
I agree.
Okay.
And we brought phones.
This is available, not necessarily real world ability to make clear phone calls.
This is available and it is clearly to make phone calls in the building.
Okay, then let me just talk about one more.
Sure.
Because this is the area we, we had long conversations about, the Dearborn Maintenance Garage on South Gully, which is the area Cherry Hill and Gully, we've had a lot of comments on.
Correct.
Here it's listed as very good. So excellent, I have two bars. If I'm at Gully, am I going to have more than two bars?
Excellent does not mean two bars. Excellent is going to be better. I agree with you. However, the Cherry Hill and Gully, we had an engineer drove specifically because you brought her up and I provided the results to you and they confirmed coverage.
Barely, one bar. And I will tell you, if I call that guy, he cannot talk to me. So yes, I, I want to get past this term coverage because I, I want to talk about practical use.
Yes.
Are we going to be able to practically use city, T-Mobile cell phones in areas, forget coverage, I don't want to use that word anymore, that when you turn your phone on, you only have one bar?
We should. And if we don't, they will be responsible to provide the needed coverage for that area.
So if I, if I may, Councilmember.
Yes, Chief.
Just, I just wanted to double down on a few things and I think that, and I'll have the director kind of expand on it. I think one is the, the city cell phones and then the prioritization on the, the network with first responders and, and city.
Absolutely.
And then the other piece is, I think it was a great suggestion by, by Councilman Abraham when I was talking to him a little bit about this conversation around that area in particular because I also drive through that area and I am also, and I think like, many of us should like, start like a group because I am also a T-Mobile customer for about 15 years, which is crazy. But I think a part of the, the infrastructure, I asked the, the director with your recommendation around, if the infrastructure is not there to support, is T-Mobile willing to build out or provide the additional support to help ensure that that infrastructure is? So I'd let you just respond back to that piece because I think that's important for the council to know.
Absolutely. We walked into the negotiation with that guarantees in place. Because we told them, there will be an areas that we may need you to build additional infrastructure to cover the signal. They said yes. Anytime we discover an area that needs more support, we will, we will build the infrastructure as part of this contract.
Director, I appreciate that and Chief, I appreciate. I think the issue is, is that according to them currently, there is no issue.
Right.
So then the question becomes, you know, that's the legalese and the legal department on how the contract is with. And there has to be a threshold, right? Just like in academia, if you get a D or E, you're out. You know, you failed. That's a failing. Everybody knows that.
Yes, Council President.
So on this one, I think we're worried about an objective aspect to it. Council?
What I would just, if I, if I may, what I would just also add, in addition to T-Mobile's survey around the, the coverage, we also, as the city, did our due diligence to ensure that we had the coverage. We, many of our directors and including myself actually had a cell phone that we utilized from T-Mobile. So I think to just, to reiterate the fact that yes, T-Mobile has done their, their due diligence to kind of provide what is under their definition, coverage and service, we also did ourselves. And I think that, that is a point that I just wanted to make. And then also, I think none of us can argue on the financial side of this because, you know, the numbers just make a lot, a lot of sense. But in addition to that is the relationship and the, the ability to communicate with T-Mobile on the things that we need and them coming back to us with solutions versus, you know, counters that don't necessarily solve the problem for us. So I, I think that, you know, duly noted all the, the comments and concerns from this body. And I think the director has taken those concerns and ensured that we've communicated those to T-Mobile.
Absolutely.
I appreciate it. I think, yeah, just a couple of follow-ups. I know Councilman Paris has been waiting and we'll get to all the council, but just, I think our bigger concern, Chief, is, is the threshold. So this is a four-year contract. Mr. Romer, would we be able to get out of this contract if, if the director or administration deems this to be that the service is not, is not sufficient? Because Chief, just to go back to the point about, you talk about economics and you know, I do believe in economics, but I can tell you, being here long enough, the lowest bidder is not always the best bidder. And you always normally get exactly what you pay for and never more. So that, to me, that's our concern. You know, when you have such a significant reduction and all these promises, that's great, but we want to make sure there's teeth in it in the contract. So Mr. Romer, is, is there an opportunity, if it was deemed by the administration that this contract is, is a failure, to break out of this four years or no?
Yes.
If you have that information. You do, okay. All right, let me get, Councilman Abraham had a follow-up and I'm going to get to Councilman Paris. Councilman?
Just for clarification, it, it says it's a five-year month-to-month contract.
Yeah, that's true.
So I've never heard that term before. It's either usually five years or it's month-to-month. So are we, that, that's the memo, very first paragraph, five-year month-to-month contract.
Yes, I read it that way too, so yeah.
With a five-year renewal option. So this is really, could go on 10 years.
So if I may, my understanding of the five year is to lock the discount, correct? But we have the ability to discontinue the contract anytime we foresee any issues with the service.
All right. So the proper way, Councilman Abraham, I apologize, just for everybody, the proper way is that it's a month-to-month contract with a lock of a five-year term on the rates?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, one more quick and I'll, and I'll be done, I promise.
Of course, of course.
Because this is unbelievable, but I want, because this is what it says in the memo, that of our current 413 devices, they'll all be eligible for a zero
Replacement.
Cost replacement every 10 months.
Correct.
So 413 people are going to get new phones if they choose to.
So.
Every 10 months.
Thank you. That is the key word, if they choose to.
For 60 months.
Obviously, we will definitely treat it based on the needs. We, we don't have the capacity to change cell phones every 10 months. However, we have it in the contract. If your phone is broken or have issues, the contract allows us to change it every 10 months, yes.
Okay.
This is normal. This is what forced contracts.
Yep.
Thank you for that, gratitude, Council President.
Yeah, of course. Thanks you, Councilman Abraham. Councilman Paris, thank you for waiting.
Thank you. I appreciate the questions and two of them that you just asked is what I was going to ask. But here's, here's one other thing, just to give me more of a perspective here. It says in our backup that this contract should go forward, starts December 1st, okay? And then the five years up to another renewal and what have you. The paperwork that was just handed out to us, you know, shows back in July that projected macro network coverage would be this. Excellent, very good, good. So my question to you is, if this is projected and you've answered part of it, that if it doesn't meet our needs, they will have to, you know, make, make good on their promise to us that we're going to have.
Absolutely.
What this is projected to be or what was sent to us via email? What I'm saying, there's, there's like 40 different locations here.
Correct. These are all of our locations in the City of Dearborn.
Yeah, and T-Mobile has been an established, you know, company in the City of Dearborn and elsewhere for a long time.
Correct.
Just like, you know, the, the other providers. So if this is projected back in July, I mean, what is it now? Are they going to be able to meet this standard and then based on a contract that starts December 1st, not back in July?
Thank you. We started the testing back in July. We continued testing until the end of last week. So the test started in July, but we've been working with them. Like the chief indicated, we even received devices from them and we deployed it to our directors and some of our employees to test. So we've been working with them since July, but the work is continuously, until now, actually.
The last comment that I would make is I think every single one of us here in administrative staff knows that there's been a problem at the Dearborn Administrative Center for a period of time.
And that is the reason we are going to change it.
Right, and I understand. And then as Councilman Abraham stated very astutely too, that should it be one bar or two bars, I don't know that is, you know, I'm one of the people too, have the same difficulty. You're in the building, need to conduct business, you get a phone call, whatever, one or two bars in our administrative center, you know, this has got to be.
What, what you will get from me as director is a guarantee of service because we tested this area multiple times and that's the reason I am here to present them. I will not associate the City of Dearborn next to a vendor that will not provide a good service to the city. So that's a guarantee.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, I will say, since you guys started in here, I don't know if you actually did anything, but my signal has gotten much better in the chambers. But, but as far as the, the concerns about, especially specifically Cherry Hill and Gully, because that's like one of the most obvious dead zones to me personally and clearly Chief of Staff and other council members are dealing with it. Can you reach out to them and tell them, this is the, forget just the city employees, we're going to be giving them a half a million dollars and I know people live in that area too. It's something that they need to address. I don't care, also, I'm an engineer. This means nothing to me actually, because you can, like the council president said, you can define measures of success. Council President said, you can define measures of success however you want. So what I can tell you about is customer experience. And I live it. And I'm not a picky person when it comes to internet because I'm very well aware of this because my degree is in this type of stuff. So if the customer experience is terrible, then they need to do something about it. And we're gonna give them a half a million dollars and we're gonna create this relationship. I'd love to see or hear from you guys, you know, this is something that we're gonna look into with our new, very nice relationship, clearly, that we're building with T-Mobile. So is that something you can look into for us?
Absolutely. And that's the reason we asked for them to provide us with cell phones.
Yes.
Because I'm like you too. I don't only depend on what in front of me from the data or papers. We got cell phones and we deployed it to multiple directors and employees within the city to test it. So that's the customer experience we gathered.
Yes.
Second, to your point, yes. They are aware of this area and I asked them to really look into it from a public sector coverage.
Mm-hmm.
Because again, we have ambulance, we have police cars. That is going to be looked into for sure. And just an FYI, even Verizon in that area is also dead.
It's not dead, it's just.
I mean, I have Verizon and sometimes I get bad signals in that area. I don't know what the reason is.
Yeah.
But T-Mobile is committed to look into it.
So, and funny enough, actually, at the, Council President discussed, some of the members of council are getting new cell phones. Put me on the list for one of these cell phones because I'd like to go out and see the coverage myself as well.
You submitted the request, we're working on it.
Absolutely.
You'll probably be the first one if this is approved. You'll be the first one to get to T-Mobile.
You have to go through Jackie though. Jackie is the, is gonna be, is the gatekeeper.
Yes. Thank you, Chief. All right. Thank you, Director. Appreciate it, Director Shaja. Any other questions or comments on this item? Shaha, I'm sorry. Any other questions or comments on this item? Sorry. That's true. You're right. Any objection to unanimous roll? Unanimous roll should be attached. Next item, please.
We will move up the consent agenda to item 13, resolution by council members Enos and Paris approving the minutes of the previous regular meeting of October 10th, 2023.
Okay. Are there any additions, deletions, or modifications to these minutes? Hearing and seeing none. Any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing on show shall be attached. Next item, please.
Item 14, resolution by council members Elswafi and Enos, authorizing the Finance Director to recognize the Michigan Economic Development Corporation revitalization and placemaking grant in the amount of $787,718 and revenue and appropriate the same within the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority Fund as a transfer to the Facility Fund and to recognize and appropriate the transfer in the Peace Parks Project V02023. Also authorizing to transfer the EDDA matching contribution in the amount of $787,718 from the CIP Project M20017 to the Peace Park Project V02023 and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The MEDC RAP Grant Program is intended to provide funding towards place-based infrastructure developments and public space improvements to address negative economic impacts of the pandemic and to enhance downtown validity. This is a request to accept the funds from the Michigan MEDC Placemaker RAP Grant Program in the amount of $787,718 and is requiring the matching same funds to come from the East Dearborn Downtown Development Authority in the same amount of $718,000, $787,718. The grant will be applied towards the city of Dearborn Peace Park Project at the City Hall Park in the EDDA. An immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item?
Question.
Councilman Hamud?
So is this gonna be an additional funding of, is the total 787 or is it both 787 from the state and additionally a 787 from the East DDA? So it's both?
Yeah, I would indicate it was a match, but we'll have the Director.
Council President, you are correct. It is a match.
Okay, just state your name for the.
Sorry, thank you, sir. Jordan Torri, Economic Development Director.
So this is an additional 1.5 million into the City Hall Peace Park just by itself?
Correct.
On top of the, what was already funded, which was, I guess, if the Finance Director recalls, what was it, 2 million?
I'm not sure, but we, I'm not sure if it was 2 million, but I'm sure we can get it. But the question is, Mr. Director Torri, this is an additional to already appropriation, is that correct?
Correct.
So our cost almost doubled on the East Dearborn Park?
I don't know the cost for the Peace Park off the top of my head. What I can tell you is that we're moving to add this to that project. I'm not managing the Peace Park, just this funding.
So no one has any questions about the cost doubling on the East Dearborn Peace Park?
Can you please just clarify your question, Councilman?
I mean, you have the floor.
Okay.
Councilman Hamud?
Yeah. What happened there that required a huge increase in the cost of the park?
So I, as I stated, I'm not in charge of managing the Peace Park Project or its budget, but what I can tell you is this.
So who is?
The original, if I, Councilmember, if I may just really quickly take, because I think it gets at the root of your question. The original project, which, so the contractors that used to do the DDA services, they applied for this funding. They put some drawings together for an alley project that frankly, they didn't have the full funding for. So the nexus of moving this funding to the Peace Park Project, at least as I understand, it was not necessarily an overage. It was putting the funding to a project that frankly was already in motion, had more design work, there was more of a formed plan. The original DDA contractors, they frankly just didn't have the full funding in place for the original concept idea, which was the build-out of pedestrian alleys.
Yeah.
So I just, I think I can answer your question, Councilmember.
Chief, yes. Let her, let's see if she can answer, Councilman.
Has the change of the cost of the park changed? No. Has the allocation of the funding for this, the funding for this park been allocated because it's in the East DDA? Yes. So the additional funding or the funding for the Peace Parks will be utilized for other pieces of our park renovation projects, if that makes sense. So I think it's just a semantics of, the question is, has the amount, what we're paying for the park changed? No. But where the funding, this funding in particular, because it's associated to the East DDA, is being utilized to fund the project for, for Peace Park 2, sorry.
Yeah, so where I'm having a hard time with it, so for example, I am just now learning that the pedestrian walkway that was gonna be between the, I know what you're talking about, it was between Schaefer and the 50-50 lot and kind of like near the museum. So that not happening is news to me. Additionally, if, we've been playing a game with some of the parks. So for example, a park was canceled. We never really brought that one up too much, but it just kind of happened in the background, the park that was on top of the structure. So that money is still allocated in the budget for the general parks project. I think part of the issue with the way that we split it is, my understanding, and maybe this is a question for Finance, is Peace Parks Project V02023, that's just broadly all three part, well, what was it? It was four parks, now it's three parks. It's just, that budget is just for those parks, right?
That's my understanding. I would defer to Finance for the exact.
Yeah, Mr. Kennedy, if we have someone from Finance to answer the Councilman's question regarding the funding, Chief, I understand that your answer is, I understand what is going on. We received a grant, so there will be some shifting. There's no additional cost to the proposal, but. Thank you. Director?
Good evening, Michael Kennedy, Finance Director. Councilman Hamud, what you said is exactly true.
Okay.
That is a general project for all Peace Park Project work.
Mm-hmm.
And it was awarded by the Council for $9,018,000 and that amounts, remains the same. It hasn't went up.
Okay. But the funding, but now we're going to be exceeding the funding they originally allocated because now we're recognizing 1.5 million in revenue into that project fund, right? So originally we allocated.
We're not exceeding the contract.
Not the contract. So originally we allocated 9 million into that, nine, nine.
Million, 18,000.
Nine million into the fund. Now that fund is going to have additional revenue allocated to it in the amount of 1.5 million, correct?
Well, that would be, Director Kennedy, that would be an assumption that the, I'm sorry, the application for the grant wasn't in process, it was not considered in that funding. So I guess that would be the question.
Right, was it?
Well, we don't know because if, there's a lot of times where they anticipate the grant return and they write it in.
So is this gonna be additional revenue to the fund that was not anticipated before? Or was this already anticipated into the allocation we made prior?
Just so I'm 100% clear, I'd like to get you that number and make sure I don't have it off the top of my.
Well, that's always the right answer. I'd rather you not make it up as we go. I do appreciate that. But just, Director Kennedy or Mr. Romer for our Corporation Council, if, Councilman Hamud, if we do find out that this is additional, it would have to be placed in there because it is subject to a grant that requires it to go there. So then I think, if I'm correct, the only other possibility with the Council would have to withdraw some of that funding that was already allocated in another resolution to take away some, if the Council chose to choose that. Is that correct, Mr. Romer?
Yeah.
Mr. Kennedy? Yeah, Mr. Romer, yeah.
I'm not understanding the distinction you're making with the Peace Park account and then the recognition of a grant. By bringing the grant to you, you're recognizing the grant and the placement of those funds into a specific count. So I don't know why the Council would be under the impression that it needs to remove funds from the existing Peace Park account because the item before you is the recognition of the grant and the account it would go into. So if it goes into the Peace Park account, then that's where you would be recognizing and placing it. It wouldn't impact what you've already approved in the account. You would be approving those additional funds into that account. Does that make sense?
I think.
Councilman, yeah, I know we had Councilwoman Herrick, but Councilman Abraham, if you have to follow up on it.
Because I think it's getting super confusing because what the memo says is that these funds, 787,000 of grant and 787,000 from the EDDA project fund will be added to the Peace Park budget. To me, that's an increase in the budget. I don't know how you interpret that. It's not.
I agree with you, but the idea that because it's going in there, you now have to remove funds that were previously allocated to that account as part of the Peace Park account is not correct.
I got that part. But the original conversation was, did the budget go up? And the answer was no.
The question that Council, the Councilman Hamud asked was if the project for the Peace Park 2, the project, did it go up? And the answer is still no because there's no changes to the, or to that project in particular. Now broadly speaking, if we're talking about the actual account itself and if it's increasing, then to the.
Yeah. Chief, I respect, I respect.
Sorry, I don't understand. I guess my question is.
I know, but I respect Mr. Romer's comments on it, but that wasn't the question. The Council's fully aware, you're indicating that they don't have to do that. We know what we don't have to do. The question is, can we? And the answer is yes.
So I guess if Council President.
So the answer is, if the Council wants to reduce the funding, my understanding, this funding must go to that project because it's grant. So if the Council determines later on that they like to withdraw money, take away some of that money, that's up to the Council purview. Mr. Romer, is that correct? That's the question.
Yeah. So I just respectfully disagree with what I answered. I answered the question as to what's happening with the account and the recognition of the grant funding. I believe Councilman Abraham, or I'm at least in agreement with Councilman Abraham, that the budget has gone up by the amount of the grant you're putting into the account. The question then that followed from, I believe, Councilman Hamud was, do we have to reduce? Or there's this conversation on reduction of the original 9 million that you approved. That is not the case. That's what I was answering.
I don't believe I said reduction.
Somebody said.
Right. But the question is, yeah, but the question is not, the question is, can we reduce? And the answer is yes. Am I correct on that?
Can I ask a question?
You can always reduce.
Let's just get that out the way.
Yes, you can always reduce the account.
That's right. So we will have to flush this out, but this item in front of us is grant and must go into this account. So I think we want to stay pointed on that. Is it extra funding? I think it's clearly that it is. We'll have to get into to where it's at. And as you indicated, there was a parcel park on the roof that was reduced. The Council was fully aware of that. The mayor let us know that. And that money was absorbed by the DTE underground aspect, which they gave us regarding that. So at this time, I'd like to get.
I actually like to fully disagree with that. I don't, I didn't get any additional information about that.
DT? From the mayor?
We never received any project, a new project outline. I didn't even know it was, I heard anecdotally, again, these are like things I hear, but we didn't actually officially receive information on that.
Well, I apologize. My understanding was that the mayor did speak to that at a mayor's briefing, but maybe I misjudged. That's what I understood. That's how I understood that other part. But again, this item here has to be allocated to this, but we have the right to reduce or relook at that. You're absolutely correct. Councilwoman Herrick?
I'm trying to understand, first of all, about the Schaefer Plaza. I'm very disappointed that that is, that project's not going forward because that plaza is a mess. It's not welcoming. It has trip hazards in it and this is right behind, you know, our world-class Arab-American National Museum. It draws people from around the world and it doesn't serve us well. And so I'm disappointed. I somehow missed, and I'm glad that Councilman Hamud brought this up, that that plaza is not proceeding. So my question regarding the funding is, if that money was allocated for the plaza, I'm not quite understanding why it has to go to the Peace Parks, the money that originally was gonna go to the plaza.
Councilmember, I can explain that too. So what I also want to just clarify, we're not deciding that the plaza that this grant was originally for is not going to happen. I think the issue was, we weren't gonna be able to complete it within the required timeline of the RAP funding. So what we worked on with the state was to try to identify an alternative project that could be completed during the funding so we don't forfeit the funding. So that's essentially the strategy here. The reality of that is, yes, we have to go back to the drawing board on funding sources for that plaza. We still want to do it. We've talked with the East DDA Board. The desire is still to do that project. The reality as it was initially conceived, there was not enough money to achieve the entire project just generally. But then even with this funding, to achieve a portion within the timeline required by the grant. That is my understanding. So what we did is we pivoted to a project that we could complete within that timeline.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that and that it's still on the drawing board that we're gonna do something with the Schaefer Plaza. So my next question is regarding, again, what Councilman Hamud was alluding to, can we please receive a project update on all the Peace Parks as to what funds have been allocated and what's been spent, what's been added to the account and what the upcoming expenses are projected to be? Because it sounds like it's changing. Well, I know it's changing because, again, we know that the DAC, the rooftop parking park has been, project was discontinued and those funds are still in that account. And where are those funds gonna go? If not to that project, where are they gonna be allocated to? Because we approved the $9 million plus, what, 500,000 and another half million in contingency for those specific parks. And it's been changing. And it'd be nice to, it will be helpful to see it all in one place where we are with the numbers. Because right now, it sounds like the funds are still in that account and we're not doing the same things with them as originally intended.
I'll work with my colleagues to get that information for sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Councilwoman Herrick. Councilman Elswafi?
Thank you, Council President. I guess just to shed light on this, and I appreciate you, Councilwoman Herrick, for asking for an update, but maybe, Chief, you can speak to her right now, just to keep it simple. You have a bucket of funds right now and it's full and then we're getting more money into that bucket of funds. So what is the plan, if you can speak to it? Are you gonna add, increase the scope of the project? Are you gonna reduce the amount of funds that's currently in the bucket? What is the plan, if you can speak to it?
I think what would be beneficial is to counsel a woman Herrick's comment. I think to the point of it's going to be spent within like the park and recreation and the extension of the accessibility for our residents on those amenities. I think it would be very helpful if we do a recap and just to kind of give you a little broader scope of, you know, all the different projects that are in that bucket and kind of the scope in which we'll be operating in. Some of the projects we've all seen kind of come into fruition, whether it's the soccer fields and then you obviously seen the Peace Park 1.5 come into play as well. So maybe just the next mayor's briefing, it'd be a good idea just to kind of do a recap of, you know, where we are and where we're going.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Councilman Paris?
Thank you, Council President. The only comment that I want to make, and I appreciate Councilman Elswafi bringing this forward, taking a look at this, you know, I have no idea either about the alleyway, what was supposed to be done now or then, we were really anticipating because of what's already been stated. But I want to go back, just not too many months ago too, when we had the totality of the Peace Project, Peace Park Project, it brought before us for a vote and a discussion. This room was full. We had a lot of people here anticipating that this was gonna go forward. We had a few of us on council that had a number of questions as to what we could expect in the future and some concerns. And matter of fact, I do certainly recall that some of us asked for a further study session before a final decision is made. And I think every single person on this council, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I believe, including myself, I want this Peace Project to go forward. I think it's very good that we need these amenities. It would be something fantastic for the city that we could all be proud of and have all sorts of events and something to be proud of. We gotta get people out of their homes. We gotta get the sense of community, the. of their homes. We got to get the sense of community, the socialization back. There's so many things you can say about this piece project, but we had, myself included, that were very hesitant after receiving some late information. And to me anyways, we're receiving late information again. We've had some recent changes to what came up with piece park 1.5 after the rooftop. It's already been explained. I'm going to tell you that I have some hesitancy in this, especially what I'm hearing now. I had some hesitancy before, even though I'm fully in favor of the piece park project in its totality, but there's been too many changes. And keep in mind, too, we have to recognize these funds by 2024, where they're going to go specifically, and we have to spend it by 2026. So time is running out and all of a sudden, we're getting changes, getting this change, getting that change. And quite frankly, I'm becoming very confused where exactly the money is going from this location to this location and for what purpose. That's all I'm saying. I'm concerned about it.
I understand that, Councilmember. And I just would clarify that in the memo, and we're also bound by terms with the MEDC, this funding in the EDDA is going to the City Hall piece park, I'm sorry, the former City Hall piece park on the east side. That was specific enough for the MEDC to say, you have this project in place. This is the general scope that you're doing for this park. These funds are going to that park. So we worked through them on the bureaucracy side to get their approval, contingent on yours, of course, of putting this funding in that place. So it will be designated to that east side piece park. So we know that. And as far as, in terms of putting this funding into that bucket, that is the certainty. That is where this, this specific funding would go, is toward that park.
Thank you, Councilman Hamud.
So I guess to my point, so on this specific topic, as far as recognizing funds and allocating it to the East Dearborn former City Hall piece park, fine, like, I'll just say it. My opinion is, I'm never going to say no to a free three quarters of a million dollars for the city. But here's my thing. The entire budget annually for the East Dearborn DDA is something like, what is it, 800,000? Am I correct?
Roughly.
Something roughly.
Yeah.
So my, so my concern has to do with, if the East DDA is giving essentially a year's worth of allocations to our piece parks, what else are we doing in the East Dearborn DDA? And if we're not going to be creating these other things that are tangential to just that one, we'll call it a capstone project that's being performed in that area? Because God knows, I mean, I actually used to live a block from there. I still go there all the time to coffee shops and businesses in that area. The whole place needs a big makeover to make it a real downtown, which it is a downtown right now. It just could be doing much better, and I'm not going to go on that rant right now. But here's my point. You're, we're allocating 1.5 million to the, to the piece park project. Councilman Elswafi actually asked an excellent question, which was, what is the actual future financial plan in regards to the overall piece park project? And to be quite frank, we didn't get a straight answer as to whether that money was going to be pulled out of the account because you're, it's a very, it's very easy. You have an existing bucket of money. It's full to the brim, just like you guys wanted for the, for the parks project, mostly with ARPA dollars that, like Councilman Paris actually said, have to be allocated, or at least chosen to be allocated by the end of this calendar year, correct? Am I wrong with the ARPA dollars?
2024.
Twenty, sorry, next calendar year. So my, so you can, we still have the ARPA dollar existing that we can utilize for a bunch of things, which we discussed in detail in the budget session. Is it still possible to pull any of the ARPA dollars that we allocated into the, into the piece parks account?
Director Kennedy, before you, you start, just because I think we're getting into a rabbit hole, and I just want to be conscientious of a few things. One time, two, what's in front of you, which is a grant.
I understand.
Right? And I think that respectfully, there was additional information that was requested, and the additional information will be provided at the mayor's briefing with a more in-depth review around the project. The reality is, these funds will be utilized for the parks, and you will get a better understanding of how the money is being utilized. I think what is in front of you today and what you will be voting on today is what we should be focusing on. And then I believe that if you all want to say no to the money, no to the state, then that is up to this body to say that we are rejecting the, the money that is coming from the state of Michigan.
Right.
If you all will be just--
Thank you, Chief. Yeah, no, we got it fully. And just a reminder, the council gave the money in a bucket fashion. A lot of people are showing the bucket fashion. And that 10 million dollars, if you guys remember, I think everybody pretty much was here to take a picture out there with the state and the county. The mayor asked us to do that and then took the 10 million and made it 30 million dollars. Got 20 million more from our state and county partners. So it is well in the purview of the council to remove money, transfer money, but just to keep in mind, the council allocated it in a bucket. The bucket has changed in size and scope, and it's, Councilwoman Herrick's on point, and Councilman Elswafi, all of our members regarding getting an update on that. But remember, the council has its purview to move money either way they like after we see where they're going. But as the chief has indicated, I'd like to move on on this item. I don't think there's anybody, as you indicated, would want to turn away a matching 780,000. But it is warranted that, and Jackie, please post that on there, that hopefully the mayor and the administration will address these concerns on the moving funding. But just keep in mind, the council authorized this, which did pay two times the dividends to our taxpayers and to our residents, to the tune of 30 million dollars, 20 million dollars more. So we do have the right to allocate that money and look at it, and we will. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yeah. I still ask a question of the finance director that wasn't answered.
Which?
Which was, can we still pull ARPA dollars that we appropriated into the fund for the piece parks and use it for other aspects?
Well, Mr. Romer, I understand. No, no, your question's well pointed, but I don't know if the, the ARPA funds has legality to them, so if they're pulled out--
I know it does.
I know, but the answer's going to be, of course, you could do it, but it has to go to a project.
I'd like to know, I'd like to--
It has to go to a project that qualifies for the grant.
Which is great. We have plenty of them.
Okay. Mr. Kennedy?
Hi. Michael Kennedy, Finance Director. I'll tell you that the ARPA dollars are committed and spent for 2023. We did that with a memo in June.
That's right, yeah.
And then we took that money, which had to go through the, I call it cleansing--
Yeah.
--to use for general governmental purposes.
Okay, so we already did that.
We're completing our audit currently, which we use for full-time and part-time wages and streetlight election. So that officially cleansed the money--
Correct, because we, yeah, he is correct.
We fully obligated and spent those ARPA dollars.
Well, if you recall--
That was strategic.
Yeah, if you recall, it was brought to the council, and the council made the decision because there was talking about call back and the government might take the money back. So we allocated it at one time. Thank you, Mr. Kennedy, for clarifying that. So that has been gone. Okay.
Good.
You want water, you go?
No.
All right, thank you very much. Any other questions or comments on that, Chief? Thank you for the response, and I'm sure we'll have that at the briefing session.
I guess my last comment.
You have another one?
Yeah, you know what?
Okay, Councilman Hamud?
On the com, and I appreciate that the administration has parlayed our 10 million investment into 30. But for me, it's not about the quantity of money that you spend, it's how it actually impacts the people that you're supposed to use and enhance their lives with it. And if there are other opportunities and other ways where we can enhance the East Dearborn downtown, I just don't want to see the EDDA only perform exactly one project because they spent, again, a huge amount of money that I think that the EDDA needs to do more other things with. That's my personal opinion, to go and back a part. But I do understand the placemaking grants because I actually am very interested in this grant in specific, and I was very happy that the state was willing to give it to us for that, for the alleyway. But, you know, I hope to see more East Dearborn DDA projects than, than just one thing, so.
All right, thank you. Any other questions or comments on this item? All right, any objection to unanimous rule being attached? Real call vote? Okay. Mr. Clerk, can we have a real call vote, please?
Councilmember Hamud?
Yes.
Councilmember Abraham?
Yes.
Councilmember Paris?
No.
Councilmember Elswafi?
Yes.
Councilmember Herrick?
Yes.
Council President Serini?
Yes.
Councilmember Inos?
Yes.
Sixty eight as the resolution passes.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, can I have the next item, please?
Item number 15, resolution by Councilmembers Elswafi and Inos approving the right-of-way dedication of 1,377 square feet of Elm Street at the existing intersection at Beach and Oakwood Boulevard from Ford Land, consistent with the city's planned improvements along Oakwood Boulevard to address traffic safety concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. In 2021, the city council conditionally approved a partial closure of Elm Street to vehicular traffic to address traffic safety concerns and to be consistent with the planned improvements along Oakwood Boulevard. The closure was reviewed by Engineering Fire Department as well as Traffic and Safety, requiring that Ford dedicate a portion of their property to allow for sufficient turnaround area for emergency vehicles. In alignment with this condition, Ford Land is proposing to dedicate a portion of their, of their property to the city of Dearborn to become Elm Street right away. The area that is being dedicated is approximately 1,377 square feet. This proposal will help buffer the residential neighborhood from being negatively impacted by the increased traffic volume related to the new campus, and the immediate effect is being requested. Any questions or comments on this item?
Okay, hearing and seeing none. Is there any objection to a unanimous rule? Okay, hearing none, so is attached. Next item.
Item 16, resolution by Councilmembers Hamud and Paris authorizing additional contingency to the Sheena Roofing and Sheet Metal in the amount of 225,000 for the Hubbard Roof Replacement Project for Mechanical, Electrical, and Communications Changes, Change Orders, also authorizing the facility supervisor to execute all change orders and modifications that utilize all approved contingency and requesting immediate effect.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The Department of Public Works and Facilities, in conjunction with the Purchasing Department, recommends the increase in contingency funding of 225,000 to add to the existing contract with Sheena Roofing and Sheet Metal for the Hubbard Roof Replacement. This contract was initially authorized by the council on April 18th of 23. The additional contingency is for Mechanical, Electrical, and Communications Change Order, including ductwork, reallocation of communications and electrical controls. Immediate effect is being requested. There were several questions at the committee of the whole meeting, and I appreciate the purchasing sending that over. I know we received some of it during the committee of the hold, and then the rest back in email that was very thoughtful to understand the scope of work. Any questions or comments on this item?
All right, any objection to unanimous rule? Hearing none, unanimous rule should be attached. Next item.
Item 17, resolution by Councilmembers Elswafi and Abraham approving the First Amendment to the Maintenance Agreement with West Village, Michigan LLC to create additional public gathering space as part of the city's piece park efforts and requesting immediate effect.
All right, as part of the city's piece park efforts, and an opportunity was identified to collaborate with the West Village common stakeholders to create an additional parking gathering space that also benefits the adjacent business. The legal department has worked with West Village to craft an amendment to the existing maintenance agreement for West Village Commons to memorialize the terms surrounding the conversation of the Commons as well as an additional piece parks space. The subsequent, the subsequent changes of the agreement will formalize, formally authorize the city's installation of the park improvements, the closing of the spaces for traffic vehicle, vehicle, traffic vehicle parking, enabling adjacent businesses to install structures that would support outdoor seating and dining and allowing social district and space, as well as allowing a limited valet service. The park improvements will be maintained by the city, and the remaining will be, be maintained by the business, adjacent business owners. This additional space will extend the piece park vision and link Michigan Avenue and the West Village Drive through a pedestrian-oriented dynamic space that draws on existing blocks and mortar, bricks and mortars, businesses, and benefits the enhancing space that is already used for outdoor dining with new amenities for the pedestrians. This is immediate request, immediate effect is also being requested. So many people that have been watching the meetings in the past, the council has been asking for this for years, limited parking in front of West Village to be closed and have a walkable area. In the past, there was charges for people to use the facilities outside to put areas for their gathering for food. So this should be a long-term solution for, for the city and a win-win for everyone. Any questions or comments on this one? Councilwoman
Herrick?
Thank you, Council President. As part of this agreement, there's a note about valet parking. And I, I understand some of my colleagues may have discussed this on Thursday night, but I'm looking at the back of where it says Appendix C or something, and I'm not seeing, I'm sorry if I'm missing it, but how is this valet parking agreement? How does this work? How often is it going to happen? And where are the spaces that are depicted in Exhibit C?
Who's here to speak on that?
Legal, I am.
Yes, thank you, Joe.
Yeah, so the valet parking numbers, if you look at item number six, the agreement's page three, the valet parking will take place Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings for certain events. And the designated spaces have not been identified yet. They'll be incorporated into Exhibit C. So we're still working through those spaces as to which deck or both decks, or how that's going to work, whether it's on the bottom or designated spaces on the top.
Okay. My concern is that as much parking in those decks at the lower levels be available to the general public and especially, obviously, handicap parking spaces, and that we're not alienating the folks that are coming downtown and they see the valets happening in what they know to be a public structure, and they're not able to use those spaces at the lower levels.
Councilwoman, I think that's a great point. If, if the council shall choose to, this is one of the powers of the council, Councilman Elswafi and Councilman Abraham, if you'd like to include that these 25 spaces shall not be on the first level, that could make a significant difference, because it's a very good point that you're indicating, Councilwoman. That would leave the administration the flexibility, but will exclude the first floor. That will leave that for the resident, for the patrons of that area. But that's up to the, the offer and the acceptance of that.
I support that amendment.
Okay, so Councilman Elswafi, Councilman Abraham?
Yes.
All right, so, Mr. Clerk? Yeah, we're going to have one comment. We'll get you the comment. But just for the record, we have a change that the 25 parking spaces shall not be on the first level.
Okay.
And then we leave the flexibility for the contract drafters. Councilman Paris?
Yeah, if I could, just to ask a question for clarification. I know about the 25 spots and what we're attempting to do now, but obviously for valet parking, the valet employee would then go to the parking structure, retrieve the vehicle, and bring it back. Is there a specific allocated spot that will now be designated for that valet that will be authorized to be able to park a vehicle on a moving street and be signage and so on to be able to have that valet service? I just don't have it here, so I, I just wanted to clarify what the service would be.
Mr. Romer?
Yeah, so that'll be, you still need a valet license, and so that would be part of that license process. I would imagine you would have a limited time parking. I believe it's West Village Drive back there.
Right.
But again, that, that issue is taken care of when they apply for the valet license. So how that's conceptually going to work, I'd have to see how they plan to do it and whether the license is going to be granted based off how they submit.
Okay, it's only a concern of mine because, you know, the village, the drive there is an open public street and blocking the roadway.
Well, we're not going to block roadways with the valet parking. And keep in mind, the reason behind this valet parking for the limited time period is because we're removing the parking in front of the business, the tenants in the plaza. So that's kind of the concept, is if we're going to remove that parking from the tenants, then we need to, for certain events, it was requested that we afford them a service since we're removing the prior one. But I understand your point. We will not block the street and obviously will address the issue with the stacking or standing of cars for the valet service when they apply for the license.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Romer. Mr. Hamud, Councilman Hamud?
Yeah, kind of more to speak on the, on the general concept. I'm very excited to see things like this because I'm all for a reduction of placing cars right up against businesses and instead create walkable places where human beings are getting to reclaim our downtown. So I'm very excited that, that the legal department and ECD were able to put this together. And I look forward to seeing more shutdowns of pavement that we can turn into walkable areas. So I've heard a lot of plans, and I'm excited that we're actually going to start executing this one. So I just wanted to say that.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Herrick?
Just for as this develops, I know that we're going to need to have new signage that indicates where the valet is and that kind of thing as, as it gets fleshed out. But on both that block and the block by Wagner Place, I don't know if there's been a study of how many people are parking along there where it's not, where they're not supposed to be parking. I know that we have drop off by Wagner Place for the businesses, and we'll probably see the same thing for the businesses on this block as well for deliveries and that kind of thing. But I don't think that we have enough instruction for people who are parking along there as to where they're allowed to park and where they're not allowed to park. Because, you know, walking through that neighborhood frequently, I will see cars that look like they're parked where they're not supposed to be parked. And I think that it could be that they're where they're not supposed to park there, but, and they're taking advantage of the fact that there isn't enough signage, or they're--
they're taking advantage of the fact that there isn't enough signage, or they maybe just aren't aware that they're not supposed to park there. So if we could please make a note that we may need additional signage for no parking as part of this. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Great. Any other questions or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, unanimous roll should be attached. Next item, Mr. Clerk.
Item 18, resolution by Councilmembers Paris and Inos amending Council Resolution 9-496-23 for the Dearborn Shop Outdoor Market by changing the second event date from November 14th to November 4th, 2023, and requesting immediate effect.
All right. The Dearborn Shop on 21906 Garrison Street through the Economic Development Department is requesting a change to the date for their second event from November 14th to the new date of November 4th for temporary use of our, to host an outdoor market on the adjacent parking lot next to the retail shop. The event is scheduled to be from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. An immediate request is being requested. Councilwoman Herrick?
I appreciate the Dearborn Shop, and I just wanted to make note, you might have said, the address is 21906 Garrison, Garrison, excuse me. And for residents who like to shop small and like to shop at local businesses, this is a wonderful place if you have not been there. And they do very nice events where they bring in additional vendors and make it family-friendly with activities. And they just have a wonderful assortment. If you want to have Dearborn branded gifts for other people or buy them for yourself because you're proud to live here, I encourage folks to check out the Dearborn Shop.
Yes, it's a great, great business. Thank you, Councilman. Any other question or comments on this item? Any objection to unanimous roll? Hearing none, unanimous roll is attached. Next item.
No other items on this week's agenda.
All right, great. We will open up to the council. I'd like to lead off by recognizing, I know we had mentioned this before about our police department being accredited, but we also have our congratulations to Lieutenant Sergio Propeski, Propeski? Pronounced wrong? For his recent graduation from Eastern Michigan University's Executive Leadership School for Staff in Command. It's a really big achievement, and we love to, yep. We're always pleased to see continued growth within our police department and always proud of the current team obtains new skills and serves our community better. So congratulations again. We also wanted to recognize that Dearborn has a Honda Trail that's coming up this weekend at Ford Field Park. If you didn't go last year, it was a very, very successful event, and it is Friday, the 27th, and through the 27th and, wait a minute, is this through? Sunday, the 29th? Who's here to speak? Yes, through. Friday, the 27th through Sunday, the 29th, and the event will open at 7:00 p.m. It will feature games, prizes, and food trucks. Those are always good. There will be a nightly Ghostbusters performance between 8, 9, and 10 p.m. Tickets for the Honda Trail are $5 for individuals and $10 for family, which is a real big bargain, and it was a very successful event. So we look forward to our Parks and Recreation. And if you're by Ford Field, you want to check it out for this weekend. I also wanted to recognize, and we don't get into the age around here, but happy birthday to Councilman Inos coming up.
Happy birthday.
All right. I also, I also had a good conversation with Councilman Inos regarding if somebody, if people watch Sunday, ESPN Football, his brother, Esso Ford graduate, Michigan State graduate, and home of Dearborn, Dearborn guy through and through, was highlighted regarding his time and his tutelage with Jalen Hurts, Super Bowl quarterback, and they highlighted him. So we do want to give a shout out to him, and happy birthday to there. Also, Mr. Romer, now the father of two little daughters.
Woo!
Yes, yes.
Welcome back.
Of course, welcome back. But we also wanted to recognize that his birthday's coming up, and I'm not sure if you have any more PTO. You're out of PTO, I think, right?
My birthday was last week.
Last week, okay. Well, we didn't have a meeting. So we wanted to wish you a happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
Absolutely. At this time, I'd like to turn over to my council members. Councilwoman Herrick?
I would just like to give a shout out to our museum staff at the Dearborn Historical Museum. Yesterday, they had a special event at the Commandant's Quarters, and Councilman Paris and I were there representing the council. In case you haven't noticed, if you've been in the Commandant's Quarters, there is a big American flag on the wall, permanent part of the exhibits there. And we learned yesterday where that flag came from, and it was a really wonderful experience. It's a Union flag that was carried by Henry Shepard in the Battle of Gettysburg in the Civil War, and he actually was from Michigan. He was in the cavalry. And yesterday, his great-great-great-grandson, I think it's three times great.
There may be another great.
There may be another great. There may be a fourth great grandson who was unaware that this flag had survived the Civil War and where it was located. The stars all aligned. This gentleman and other family members came from Port Huron, and this was arranged by our museum and the Port Huron Museum, whose director used to work here in the Dearborn Museum. And that gentleman's employer, who was doing genealogy backgrounds, profiles for the employees of that company, and they stumbled on all this and brought it all together. And that was the first time that gentleman saw the flag right there at our museum. And you could just tell he was choked up, but then he kind of got it together, and he said some really nice words to our museum staff, he and his other family member, that this was the first time that they had seen this flag. It had, part of the original's there, and then it was repaired back in the 1970s. So it's under glass. But if you or, you know, your family or kids in a class want to see something that's an actual relic from the Civil War that's here in our museum, they've committed that it is going to stay here. Our museum staff also worked to try to get the federal government to acknowledge that...
Congressional Medal of Honor.
To give a Congressional Medal of Honor to Henry Shepard, retroactively, obviously. And that paperwork is in the works, and we're hoping that it will go through, because he is from Michigan, he has connections to Dearborn, and what a wonderful thing to have on display in our museum's permanent collection.
Absolutely. Thank you for attending that. Yeah, of course, Councilman Paris?
If I could, I just wanted to recognize, too, John Polzin is a docent at the museum. He was in his Civil War uniform, and he was instrumental in coming forward with a lot of information that was presented to the family yesterday. You know, again, this was 1864, Gettysburg, and the flag survived. It was an accounting also about him secreting this flag when he became a prisoner of war on his body. And somehow, as a prisoner of war for 505 days, I believe, he secreted that flag. And once he was liberated from being a prisoner of war, that he was able to still have possession of that flag that went down through his family until it finally made its resting place at our historical museum. So, I mean, this was a wonderful event, especially the way that the family was involved in this and other people that knew the great-great-great-great-great-grandson and what had taken place so many years ago and how that flag came into be. So it's just a point of history, and I really encourage anybody to stop by the museum and see for yourself. It's history.
Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, Councilman, for being there. That's a great Dearborn story. Councilman Inos?
I'd just like to congratulate the Esso Ford High School boys soccer team for winning a district championship, and good luck to Fortune and Devontae in the high school football playoffs.
We didn't send it out. We think they're going to win the next round, so we held off on it to make sure that they win the next round. We do appreciate that. Anything else from my council members? All right. Anything from the administration?
Nothing from the administration.
Thank you, Chief. Anything from the clerk's office?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Okay, at this time, we will open up to our second public comment section. If anyone's here to address the council regarding public matters to the city, pertaining to city business, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. All right. Hearing and seeing none, I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion adjourned by Councilman El-Swafi. We are adjourned.